2024, Madam Clerk, can you side us with a prayer and pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Here.
Ms. Hamilton?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Ogier?
Here.
Ms. Als?
Here.
Open forum, non-agenda items only pursuant to 42-46-6D. Maximum three minutes per person. Did anyone wish to speak? Is there one on it? Huh? Okay. And then we'll also hold open forum at 7:15 because the meeting's, the agenda states the meeting will start at approximately 7:15. Is there anyone else that wants to speak right now?
Carol Drainville, 750 Pound Hill Road. I'm here to speak on my own behalf. I'm here to ask the elected officials of the town as the ultimate authority to obtain documents from me from the building and zoning department, which I requested in June and have not received. It's regarding complaint I filed February 15, 2024, concerning stormwater, which flowed from another property onto mine. It flowed from December 2023 through April 2024. It eroded the soil in my yard and raised the groundwater, so they had, I had to use two sump pumps, one on the inside and one on the outside in an abandoned well I have on the property. And the one on the outside was to lower the groundwater to protect my house from further flooding. I filed a complaint. The citation was, was delivered. And now I'm in, remediation is my concern. I'm requesting a copy of the remediation plan that was submitted to the building and zoning office with the name of the agency, with expertise in groundwater, especially stormwater drainage, that was used in the planning. I also would like a written explanation of how the plan will work to protect the prop, my property. I did receive one communication from the, the building and zoning inspector, and it's on town letterhead and dated June 25. It's regarding a visitation to my property, and I want to preface this by saying I know, knew nothing about this visit. I was not there. I was not notified. And my first notice was this letter. And it said, Dear Mrs. Drainville, I'm writing to follow up on our conversation June, of June 20. Please be advised that after we talked, I investigated the runoff issue regarding your, the other property. I made a site visit from which I determined that those owners were not discharging water from their property onto yours. If they were prior violations, they now appear to be remedied. There does not appear to be any stormwater runoff onto your property. I agree. That was a sunny day in June. This, my description of the stormwater was five months from December to April. There were no recent storms, so there couldn't be any stormwater, no major rain events, little precipitation. I'm concerned that that visitation is being applied to determine the veracity of my complaint. I feel it's a false equivalency. I did, when I received this letter, I put two packets of information together, and I sent one to the president of the town council and one to the town administrator with my information. I would like to, I, I also requested a meeting with at least one elected town official and the building and zoning inspector to answer some of my questions. I would like to request that meeting again because I, I have not heard. And I have to be sure that my property is going to be safe and I'm not going to have further damage.
Anyone else like to speak at this public open forum? Next, I am in this executive session, closed session, discussion by council vote or other action around general law 42-46-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions protecting, pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or potential litigation, A, agreement between town of Nosferell and Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCME, AFLCIO, on behalf of Nosferell Town Employees Local 937, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027.
Madam President, before I make a motion to go into executive session, I would like to make a motion to amend executive session, item 4A, to include bullet point two, potential litigation.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session.
It's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yeah, oh yeah, as amended, yeah.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, no votes were taken, and to seal the minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go into open session, I mean, open forum first.
Do you want to do the, all right, do you want to do the public hearing?
Do the public hearing first.
Why don't we just save this name for, for open forum? All right, just as we reconvene the meeting, just want to go back up to open forum, because we had, before we went into executives, so just want to check and see if anyone wants to speak during open forum? Anyone? Last chance? Okay. All right, discussion by council vote or other action on Rhode Island Council 94 AFSCME AFL-CIO on behalf of the Nosferfield Town Employees Local 937 Agreement Contract Ratification July 1st, 2024 to July 30th, 2027, public hearing. So make a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Rule call?
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Would anyone like to speak during public? Hearing? Anyone? Again, anyone like to speak? All right, one more time, anyone want to speak before we close public hearing?
Just, I'll speak from here, Jim Cenerini.
Thank you.
So, Jim Cenerini, C.E.N.E.R.I.N.I. I serve as the Senior Staff Representative for Local 937, Rhode Island Council 94, American Federation State Council employees. I just wanted to praise your administrative team, the town administrator and the council. We feel that this is a fair contract. We spent a lot of time hammering it out. And while, of course, we would always love larger wage increases, we came to a really good, fair deal, both for our members and the taxpayers in balancing healthcare expenditures with reasonable raises. So again, we would thank the town administrator, his team, and the council. We would urge passage of the contract.
Thank you. Anyone else, last chance, speaking public hearing? Do we close it, or leave it open? David, do we close it, or are we leaving it open?
Um, as you know, the council--
Well, I, if there's not, no evidence, you can close it, the council can't vote until two weeks after the public hearing, so you'd want to stop that clock.
Okay. All right, with no one else wanting to speak, does anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a mo-- I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
So this will be on the agenda in--
In two weeks, or next, next meeting?
Two weeks. On September 16th.
Okay. Yep. So back on the agenda for September 16th. Thank you. Discussion by council vote or other action on payment of bills. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on the payment of bills? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $295,796.59.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Nosferfield Town Council sitting as Board of Licensing, Dinner Under the Stars at the Beef Barn, looking for a one-day full liquor license, Mr. Dozier?
Yep, so, Mr. Keen wants to get up and speak, but essentially, this is just a continuation from the last meeting, where for Dinner Under the Stars, the Beef Barn would need to be granted a temporary license for one night to increase from beer and wine to full liquor. And I believe that process is complete, in terms of what's applied. Oh, and the location is out on the, yeah, outside.
Mr. Keen, did you want to? Are you all set, you don't have to?
Yeah, you don't have to.
I'm just asking.
If somebody, yeah, somebody--
Go for it.
Does anyone have any questions regarding this license? And everything's in order?
I just have a quick question about liability, everything all set with liability insurance? That was my own concern. So this will be, uh, for what date?
Saturday, September 7th, with the rain day of Sunday, the eighth.
Is the eighth, okay, thank you. So now, we just have a copy of the liquor license that is limited. So do they have one for the, for that particular day that states the September 7th date on it, or?
I think Tiffany would be getting that together. I'm, I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
But they get a separate, they get something separate from the town, right?
Correct.
Stating it's just for that day?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day or two-day liquor license for Dinner Under the Stars for the Beef Barn.
Second. Can we just state the date?
Yep, uh, sorry, so that one day would be for September 7th, with the second day being September 8th, uh, yeah, September 8th for a rain day.
Seven.
So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote or other action on status, I'm sorry, uh, yes, status progress report on specific items, facility manager, Mr. Dozier? facility manager, Mr. Dozier?
Yeah, so I'll, um, I'll keep this kind of quick, because I know we've been talking about it for a while, and I know we approved the line item in this year's budget for it. So what I did is, I essentially just put together what I've been working on for a little while. I put together what I would think a job description would look like. With that being said, I would like the council's permission to go forward and work with the solicitor, the administration, if there's another member of the council, I don't know if the president wants to serve, to finalize either what a job description would look like, or if it's determined that, I know there was talk about going up for a management service, if an RFQ or AFP can be, uh, RFQ can be put together, and have both kind of options to present, probably not before the next meeting, but the first meeting in October. Just to kind of keep this process moving, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. So I don't, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer, but that's kind of where my thought was here, just to kind of keep, keep it moving.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
We talked, we talked about it briefly prior, but is there any talk with the school department as far as having, trading services, like maybe they take over the buildings and our highway department takes over, or maybe some, one, a couple of the parking lots or something like that, to kind of offset their responsibilities? Because I know that those guys are really good at buildings, and Public Works is good at the outside stuff, so maybe we can exchange services and trade off like that and save a little bit?
I don't think those, I know that came up, and I know at the time, I think I said all options were, were open, so if that is a conversation that the schools are willing to have, in terms of how can we further share services and further leverage what they do really well, um, I'm open to that as well. I think it's just having a conversation with them, that would be the first step. Because I just don't want to assume, you know, that he, Mr. CP would want to do it.
Did you say that someone from the asset management would be part of this?
So my thought here with this, with this position, whether it's, you know, if we go out for an RFQ, or we, we hire outside, or we have, you know, partly for the salary, a part-time position, that, you know, they would serve on, or serve in a role that would advise the Asset Management Commission. When you're looking into kind of what some of the descriptions are, you know, they develop and implement a comprehensive 20-year capital facilities plan, you know, they're looking at capital maintenance, construction costs, you know, they're looking at, you know, just citywide planning from construction, or townwide planning from construction and maintenance. And so I would think that that resource could be really helpful to not just DPW, but also to that, that board as well. And then that could, um, um, carry over to the Budget Committee and planning and all that, that process, and advise the council, so that way, you know, there's a consistent piece. And, um, you know, we're, we're following that process as it's even outlined in the charter.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, I just, can I just read into the record, just for our own ratification, when we forget what we said? So the, the position you're looking for right now is just, it says municipal facilities manager plays a crucial role in overseeing and maintaining the town's buildings, grounds, equipment. This position ensures that municipal facilities are safe, functional and well-maintained, and the facilities manager collaborates with various departments to meet safety regulations, negotiate contracts and coordinate renovated, renovations and updates. So, then responsibilities, the, the topics are capital facilities, supervision, leadership, facility condition assessment, cost analysis and budgeting, collaboration and consultation. So, are you looking to further refine this position, this description, to be more in line with what we're looking for, or is this pretty much the?
Oh, no, this is just a, as I said, this, yeah, this is just an example draft. I would think that this would have to be-
Right.
Tailored to make sure that, you know, just like we did with the HR position, that, you know, it's, it's looking at what do we have currently, you know, is there any overlap in any of these positions, you know, go through that process. I don't know if maybe we want to go down the path of consulting with, like Zimmerman, who helped us in the past, or getting another consultant to help. Or do we go down the path of, okay, maybe it's not ready for a position yet, maybe we go to an RFQ-type process and we look at hiring an outside company? I think both options can be explored, because of how much we budgeted, but I would think this needs further revision, definitely.
Okay, so then my next question, from a facilitation standpoint, is who will get in touch with Mr. CP and/or the school? I guess it would be the superintendent, um, you know, and start that conversation to see if that individual is even willing at all to consolidate some of the responsibilities? And how do we do, what's the next step, in other words? So that we keep it moving?
I don't mind reaching out.
Okay.
You know, if I run into issues, I can report back to the council, or if we need to have a meeting, we can schedule something to discuss, you know, what does that look like? So I don't mind, I don't mind coordinating that council's project.
Because I think that's important, he may say no.
He may say no, but I think that we should go that route first, and avoid potentially a lot of work on your part, you know, save you a lot of trouble. If he says yes, then we can explore that route, that's the easiest route to go. Then if he says no, can't do it, then you go to Plan B.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then in RFQ, I think for, you know, a service, a company that would possibly be able to, I mean, it, it's not like we have 100 buildings.
Oh, yeah, so I can work on both of those.
It's a relatively easy ask of someone, I think, yeah.
So I'll reach out, and then I can report back at the next meeting or the meeting after, depending on when I get in contact with him. And then, if he says no, I'll work on the next step.
Okay.
Just wanted to provide an update.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is a human resource position. Are there any updates?
There is, yeah. As of Friday, there were 13 applicants for the position. Some have the required job description skill sets and certifications. Some of them don't, out of a matter of privacy, I'm certainly not going to divulge who or what. But I'm going to ask council to consider this. This position serves at the pleasure of the town administrator. It's an appointed position. So I'd like you to consider and give me what you think is the best approach here. There'll be a new administrator beginning December 2nd. And we don't know the duration of this contract, we don't know how long it's going to last. I'm suggesting that this council extend a professional courtesy to the next administrator to make that appointment, which kind of gives us a little bit of, when do we start the interviews? So I'm looking for your guidance. Tell me how you'd like for, suggest for me to proceed.
Theoretically, none of us might be here.
Yes, true.
Correct? So, we, government doesn't stop, just because it's in October, November, I say go forward.
I agree.
I do, too. I think, I think if there's some qualified individuals out there, that we should definitely move forward, we post it. I mean, now to turn around and say we're not going to, and it is an appointed position, if for some reason that position or that candidate in that position isn't performing to what the new administrator would, would see fit, then?
We'll, we'll start interviewing next week.
Could you send me some of the applications that you think are adequate, so I can just?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can. Okay. Sure. If you, if you care, there's 13 of you, care to come in and look at them, and we'll certainly, we can make your copies.
Yeah, if you can just send me the copies.
Yeah, I'll leave them with the town clerk, and you can come in, or, and council members can review them.
Can you just, can you just email them to me, please?
Is it okay to email somebody's private information? It don't have to be redacted, they have contacts, all that. So what I'm discussing with the solicitor, I'm a little concerned about emailing them unless we redact all the contact information. There's certain stuff in there, I believe, would be private, unless, the solicitor says it is.
Just suggest it, well, why don't we just, um, have packages made up, sealed by the clerk, and they can be delivered to you?
Thank you.
All right, that way we just solve both problems. We don't have to go to the trouble of redacting, and you'll get them in a confidential envelope.
Perfect. Municipal Building Review Task Force. I wasn't on the last call with, um, with Mr. Ami, do you want to?
No, I don't have, I don't have any updates, other than what he was, you know, proposing to do, and meeting with the chief, and meeting with others to try to get a sense of where we are right now, so I have no updates right now.
Okay.
Do we know when he may come back, before the council? Because I believe, before, when we originally saw, um, he said it would be like sometime in, I think, late September, but I'm assuming that got pushed, are we looking into October now? I can't imagine extending his deadline to March.
I don't think it'll be any later than early October, only, you know, we did have to push it because we had some issues to getting him the, the signed contract and the, the retainer. But, um, I can get that information for you, I know he has, you know, he's very acutely aware that we've asked for an expedited process, so I will make sure I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Our discussion by council vote or other action on petition for zone change from manufacturing to residential urban for the purpose of constructing a four-unit residential building at High Rocks, Attorney Charles Reddahan III. Do we want to, um? So it's a continuation, we don't have to open it or anything, do we?
I just think you should dis- distinguish between item number one, which is a continuation, you can announce it, it's a continuation of the public hearing, and then after that's complete, you would proceed to a second reading and a decision, if the council's prepared.
So the first agenda item is continuation of the public hearing. Did anyone want to get up and speak on this? What's that?
Is it just the attorney, no one else?
Yeah, go ahead, did you have any other comments regarding this?
Just very briefly, I know at the end of the last meeting, I, I went through with Mr. Carrulo the four variances that we were seeking, I don't know if it would be helpful to read those into the record. The first being the, the dimensional relief, uh, the subject-
I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Renia, but I, I would, I did recall asking that they be in writing so the council could vote on them, that if you do vote in a positive way, they're going to become part of the record of your approval, that are variances.
Yes.
Instead of having to go to the zoning board. Do you have copies in writing?
What I did, I, I wrote a letter, addressed to the, to the council president, which I have in-
I didn't even interrupt you.
And duplicate, no problem, I can, probably make sense to-
Thank you.
So you can follow along, beginning with the dimensional regulations. It's a lot that is 39,982 square feet. The subject proposal necessitates 6,000 square feet plus 4,000 square feet for each additional bedroom. 12 total bedrooms times 4,000 square feet is 48,000, plus 6,000, that comes out to 54,000 square feet. See in my letter, it's, I wrote 56, but 54,000, but the requested variance is correct. That's the 14,018 foot, uh, square foot, rather, variance. The requested variance have been bolded. As to lot frontage, uh, the RU Residential Urban District minimum is 200 feet. The subject property has approximately 150.16 linear feet along Butworth Street, which would necessitate a 49.84-foot variance. As to lot width, again, the minimum in the RU district is 200 feet. The subject property has 150.16 feet of lot width, necessitating a 49.84-foot variance. Lastly, driveway width, subject development is proposing an approximately 22-foot driveway, thereby necessitating a, a three-foot variance to be in compliance with the minimum of 25 feet. And we ask that, uh, the petition for the zone change be granted along with these four variances that have been outlined. I guess as a, a closing comment, this project has been well-vetted. At the behest of the Planning Department, we did commission a traffic study for the property that has shown that the, the traffic impact would be negative, or non-existent. It's been vetted by the Planning Board, the Planning Department, and there have been no, no one within the town, or any of the town departments that have expressed concern about what we're proposing. So we ask that the petition with the variances be granted.
Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Reddahan?
Nope.
No questions? Want to move to the council vote or action? Now we can move down to the council vote or other action?
Close the public hearing.
Make them, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
And now we go to discussion by council vote or other action on this item. Anyone have any other questions, or anything they had discussion about?
No, we do have a memorandum, um, from the town planner, and, um, saying the vote was taken and it was approved by the Planning Board for the four-unit residential building. So we would be including in our discussion, in our decision, these four variances, correct? Section 340 dash 3 dash 5A. One, two, three, four, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I would, I would make a motion to approve, yes.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to add, um, I understand that the residents of the High Rocks are against this, but, uh, as much as I care about the residents of the High Rocks, it's not, they don't own the property. And the property owner has rights. And so he can stick a machine shop there, right, right now, but he can't put four houses, I mean, four, four unit dwellings, so, I'm inclined to say yes on this.
Any other comments? We have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Dozier?
No.
Ms. Als?
Yes. Thank you.
Madam President, just for the record, the council granted the applicant's petition for a zone change, and which, including the four special waivers or variances to allow the project to proceed.
Correct.
And there was no comprehensive plan change, because it was consistent with the comprehensive plan, as testified by your expert?
That's correct.
I just wanted the record to be clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action on request to abandon a portion of Brighton Street, assessors' platform, lots 289 and 90. Applicant Vincent Masiallo. This will be, also be a continuation of the public hearing. Anyone like to get up to speak regarding this matter? Just state your name and address, please.
My name's Christopher Johnson, 130 Elizabeth Ave. Over the years of me living there, we've just been having a lot of traffic come up there, and we already have a plat on the other side greasing houses built. So now we have a cut-through going all the way around. We just think it's going to be unsafe for the children that are out there playing. Obviously, they're not playing in the street at all times, but they're riding their bikes. Um, I have a letter here that one of my, um, neighbors typed up, and had everyone on the street sign it, to see if we can just maybe do like, I don't know, like a public hearing or, or something, to get the, the street involved, because a lot of people are building houses in that area, and people are just flying like no tomorrow up that road, it's just ridiculous. Over this, I con- I contacted the DPW guy twice to do an assessment on the street, speed bump, something. Nothing ever happened. I went out and we bought a red flash and stoplight for the stop sign, so people can stop at the stop sign. They still don't stop at the stop sign. It's, I just think by doing this, it's just going to create a bigger headache, and someone's going to get killed by just adding more houses up there, it's just, it's, it's terrible. They did do, I'm sorry, they did do a speed study, and it came back that one person was going 35 miles an hour, but that thing was wrong.
Can you read into the record what that letter says of the, you know, for those individuals that have signed that for us, please?
Yes, as their council members, as current resident of the town, North Smithfield residence, Elizabeth Ave, which is in Butter, but to Brighton Street, we hereby oppose any further action or call on the vote to the agenda motion to abandon the portion of Brighton Street as scheduled as for today, Tuesday, September 3, 2024. Please feel free to notify the residents for further information. And so I have probably about 20 people here that signed it, but just today. I've never been to one of these things before, but my son goes out there all the time on that street, and that street is just a mess, and nothing's been getting done to it.
So when you say that street, what street are we talking about?
Elizabeth, and then it ends at Brighton. Yes, you go all the way up Elizabeth, it doesn't go into Windsocket. Hopefully, it never does, but it's a turnaround cul-de-sac down there at the bottom of Brighton. And I, as I know, is that this person wants to go up, going right, to go right behind someone else that signed this today, house, to build another two more houses up there, which my guess, down the road, he's going to loop it around to touch the grease. So now it's just going to be one big mess, so.
Thank you for reading that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, nothing, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Absolutely.
Just state your name and address, please.
Steven Jengres, 145 Elizabeth Avenue. Obviously, live on the same street as Chris. My concerns to, I have kids as well, but also the environmental impact of any construction back there. It's a ton of wetlands, and, I mean, there's wildlife everywhere. It's going to displace a lot of, you know, animals, so. And it's directly behind my house, so I know it's, you know, we have deer like crazy back there, and I don't know where they're going to go if we do a construction back there. But that's, basically just wanted to add to what he said. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir, did you want to get up and speak?
My name's Richard Capistran, from Oxford, Mass., and I own property. I was here the last meeting. This property borders Brighton Street. I just want to reiterate, my concerns raised at the last council meetings regarding abandoning the North Smithfield portion of Brighton Street. Approval by this council would cause me financial hardship if I was forced to construct a street to access the rear of my lot. I'm also concerned about who performed a water study on my lot. I have never authorized or requested such a study on my land, which is located in Windsocket, Rhode Island. Lastly, I would like to thank the council for hearing me on this matter, and I would also like to thank the council members for taking the time to make an informed decision regarding my objection to this issue with abandoning that Brighton Street section. It would definitely affect the value of my land. If that was the case, it'd be more or less landlocked, like we discussed last time. Building a street, I'd have to go around a whole block and come up onto my lot. And it's just, it's not doable for me at my age, anyway, so. That's basically the reason I objected to this petition, but I want to thank you anyway. That's it.
So Mr. Capistran, did you actually get an appraisal on how this would affect your lot?
No, I haven't. I haven't at this point, no.
So you don't have any dollar amount that you think might be, you know, thinking in terms of the additional cost? You're saying that you'd have to incur for putting in, I know you had mentioned curbing and things of that nature.
Yes, the city of Windsocket told me I'd have to do a street, a curbing, drainage. It's out of my league, let's put it that way at this point, you know, so.
And that's something you're planning on doing?
No, I, I would just, I never gave it much thought. We've talked about selling it years back, but I just hung on to it, and now I feel like I'd be blocked in totally, land would be totally useless. And as far as the wetlands, it's the first I hear of it. I don't know who stepped on my property and put all these little blue flags all over the place, but I can speculate, but I'm not about to accuse anybody. That's all I have to say.
So people already went on your land unauthorized?
Absolutely.
And that's...
Someone planted those flags on there, that's for sure. They trampled all over the backside of the lot.
Do you know when that was done?
I'm not sure. Last time I heard about it was the last meeting we had here. I checked it out, and I was amazed, I didn't, I don't know who did it.
So now this, this Brighton Street, so it's not really a developed street, right?
No, it's not. It's a paper street, but it would be the easiest access to my lot if I were to decide to build anything there. It'd be the cheaper way to go, put it that way, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Anyone else? Someone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
And now discussion by council vote or other action on this item, agenda, agenda item. Does anyone have any questions or any conversation?
I'm going to vote no on this, I'm going to tell you why. I don't think, I think when we do this, we do it for residents, and sometimes we allow the residents, we'll split the road, and we'll say half of it goes to this resident, half of it goes to that resident. And when we usually do this, it's for people that actually live at that location, and they're getting some kind of benefit from it, maybe ease to their property or something like that. But if we're going to do it for someone that's going to be a developer, and you're not going to actually live on that property, then I think that we should follow state law that applies to some of other, some other towns, and we should try to see if it applies to North Smithfield as well. And we should get an assessment for the property in the future if we're going to do this type of thing. And then offer fair market value, and not just give away what essentially we're giving you a gift that you're going to turn around and financially benefit from by making a large, two larger pieces of property, and from what is essentially a gift from the town. So that's the reason I'm going to, and now on top of the other, testimony we heard here tonight, it's, it's a difficult ask, if you ask me.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm very happy that people who normally don't get up to get involved in their government got up and did that for their children's sake and their own sake. That's always good, no matter what the outcome is, you know, so I do appreciate, and sometimes it's not easy to speak in, in public and taking the time as I am grateful to you. I think it does cast a larger net here on this whole issue, more so than just a request. You know, I think we have a bigger problem in that area if people are saying that there are things that are going on that we're not paying attention to. So I think we need to do an assessment of the whole area, to be honest with you. I, I'm not sure what the cost would be to the people who are claiming that it would be deleterious to them either now or in the future. I would like to know if there was some dollar amount or some remuneration that they would need if that, if this is something that moves forward. So I think, to me, and I'm, I know we had talked about who's not going to be here, maybe? I'm not going to be here, because I'm not running again, so for me to make a decision right now without taking all the other things into consideration, I think would be ill-advised on my part, because I'm, I am elected for the people. So I would have to pause on this right now and not move forward.
Listening tonight, I just want to say that I, I agree with Councilman Beauregard, in that I think giving it away for the sensitive development is probably not a good precedent we want to spend, I mean, and I know that we've, in the past, you're absolutely right, we've usually split the, split the road, or it's usually been between two parties. When I heard tonight that, you know, residents have to go out and pay for traffic safety devices, I mean, I would think that we should, maybe the administration, if you could direct the police department, maybe to do extra patrols in that area to maybe look at seeing if we need to put a sign or put the flashing solar speed panel thing up there that says "slow down." I think we shouldn't, that shouldn't have fallen on the residents to take that into their own hands. And having children myself, I would, speeding is probably an area that seems to be a big problem in town, we've heard it from multiple areas, so I think we need to find a way to crack down on that, because it is ultimately not going to end well if that continues to happen. And, you know, I think if we can increase the patrol in that area, that might help alleviate some of that concern as well. But in terms of this, I, I can't vote moving forward, you know, there's still questions that I have in terms of, you know, the wetlands, and also the fact that we don't seem to get an answer of who conducted that study, which I think if somebody is raising concern, that answer should be, that question should be answered, and if it can't be answered, then I think that is probably a reason why we shouldn't vote no to also aid that. So that's, that's where my head is this evening, so that's where I stand.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to agree, there's a lot of questions that we don't have answers to, and I think we need to get more answers before we move forward on something like this. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to comment on this?
Just know that area for years, because the family owned the lot Brighton adjacent to Windsocket. It was a hideaway for some of the older people, just to sit and rejuvenate themselves, so to speak nicely about it, not at home. So I think the gentleman said it very, lady said it very clearly, I think it should stay status quo.
Anyone want to make a motion regarding this item?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to deny the abandonment of Brighton Street.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion?
Clarify that vote?
Yeah.
Do I need to add more detail to it? To deny the, a motion to deny the abandonment, oh, sorry, I'll clarify it. So I'll make a motion to deny the, to abandon a portion of Brighton Street, assess a plot for lot 289 and 290 for the applicant Vincent Mezal, Mezal, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name. Mezalowa.
All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
So we're saying right now, because we don't, we have questions that are unanswered at this point, I think we need question, I think we're talking different things, too. We have to be careful that, you know, this other issue that we're talking about is something that's important.
So there is a motion on the floor, so we have to get to at least a discussion, and then I think we can allow. Or do you want me to rescind if he wants to talk? All right, so I'll rescind my motion at this time, and then we'll allow him the ability to speak.
And the second rescind?
I don't think we got a second?
Yeah, we did.
Did we rescind?
Yes.
I respect your motion. I certainly don't think you understand what we're proposing here. This project has absolutely no, zero impact on any traffic on Elizabeth Avenue. As a matter of fact, there's no, will be absolutely no access to Elizabeth Avenue, none whatsoever. All we're doing here is we're asking to abandon 40 feet by about 40 feet of Brighton Street to make this lot less, less non-conforming. There will be a house built on this triangular piece of property, absolutely for sure. We already have a zoning opinion or certificate on the particular lot. This will have absolutely zero impact on traffic, Elizabeth Avenue. It doesn't go through, and it'll have zero impact on any of the testimony that you've heard this evening. I don't really believe that the council understands what we're trying to accomplish here, but I do respect your, your consideration.
Would someone like to make a motion again?
Madam President, I'll remake my motion to...
Would it be easier just to make a motion to approve, and then everybody votes yes or no? No?
No, I'll just do it, I'm excited, thanks, John. I'll make a motion to deny a portion of Brighton Street, assess a plot for lot 289 and 290.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So for discussion, a vote yes means you are voting to deny, a vote no means you are voting to approve. Oh, I know sometimes we do this, it's, we get confused over voting yes and no, so yes means you are denying.
Okay. All right, anyone have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
I'm denying this, did you just say yes?
No, I didn't say, yes means you deny.
Yes, and I would say, oh my God, okay, yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote or other action on amendment to the zoning ordinance, section 340 District Use Regulation Table. Mr. Carullo, this is also a continuation of the public hearing.
Madam President, just for the council edification, Mr. Carullo is out sick, you know, and he can't be here tonight. This is continuation of the public hearing. He informed you, explained everything to you, so the council can proceed one of two ways. If you think you're going to have questions for Mr. Carullo, continue both the public hearing and the second reading to another day. If you feel like you have the information you need, continue with the public hearing, see if there's any more information, and then you can close the public hearing and vote. So it's really about whether you think you need Mr. Carullo here.
Madam President, I vote that we continue to move this forward. I think we're a little behind the eight ball on this one, and so sitting on this committee, I know that there is a workshop, or there is, it is going to be coming before the council, again, before the final adoption, which will be sometime in, I think, December. So I would say we do this so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to keep going.
So this, yeah, this is a stopgap measure, right? So we really need to do this, right? I agree. So continuation, anyone, I guess, continue the public hearing if anyone wants to speak on it?
So anyone want to speak on this matter in the public hearing? Anyone? Anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
And then this will be the second reading of the section 340 District Use Regulation Table. Did anyone have any questions or anything they want me to bring up on this?
No, he explained everything to us very well.
All right, so then we can move to a discussion by council vote or other action.
Madam President, I vote to approve the amended District Use Regulation Tables as presented by the planner.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
New business discussion by council vote or other action on Rhode Island Energy Installation of Pole at 119 Elizabeth Avenue, Mr. Penegas?
Good evening. Ray Penegas, Director of Public Works. Should have in front of you a package from Rhode Island Energy in Verizon, New England. They're seeking permission to put a new pole at 119 Elizabeth Avenue. With your approval, we can have this filed in the clerk's office.
Madam President, this is one of those things we have to just...
It's basically to file.
Clerk's credit, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the Rhode Island Energy installation at pole 119.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote or other action on overhead lighting at the Paul Kelly complex, the Meadows Department of Public Works, Mr. Penegas?
Also, you should have a package in front of you for new overhead lighting for the Paul Kelly complex. The original quote that you have is for $13,027.69. Just several days ago, I've been working with the distributor, the lighting distributor, and he was able to obtain a rebate from Rhode Island Energy to lower that price. That, that quote I have here for you, if you want, I can pass it out. I know I'm not supposed to pass it out, but I just got it.
Go for it.
But as long as it's by like $30, $50. It's the same project.
Oh, that's great.
It's just a lower price.
So the new amount would be $9,177.69?
That's correct. And this is on State Master Price Agreement.
And Mr. Penegas, can you just, for the record, read into what this will actually be doing at that location? Just so that we'll know.
Sure. The overhead lighting, I think there's four or five telephone poles down there with the lighting at, at the complex is at least 25 years old, these lightings. We tried to update them somewhat last two years ago and it just didn't work. So we had a, we had a comprehensive study done. We had people looking at this and to put together the wattage that's needed to eliminate this field. The field is not going to be like Fenway Park. It's, it's going to just give enough light to keep the football and cheerleaders safe at night. When they're out there, it's fall, gets dark early. Very different than like Pacheco where you're putting up $100,000 complex set of lights. It's totally different. The lights that are down there now are just insufficient and it's a safety issue. So, so it, it, it all came together, it came together nice with the rebate. We were able to lower it, which I think is going to help us. The express football and cheerleading group is combining some of their fundraising and going to offset some of the electrician's proposal of, I think it's like $7,000 and they're going to pay probably almost half of that with the town. So that, that's not before you because that's, our end is under the $5,000 bridge. So I'm seeking your permission and approval for the overhead lighting for 9,000, was it 91?
917769. And this will be done this year?
Yes, I've been guaranteed that if, if this is approved, that they can hopefully get this done in the next two or three weeks.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Can I just ask one?
I'm so sorry.
So this says that, so you just got this today, you said?
Well, I got it last week. It was after paperwork was submitted to the clerk's office.
All right, because it's saying it expires on 8/2, so we're okay, right?
We're all set.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the installation of lighting at the Meadows, the Paul Kelly complex in the amount of $9,177.69.
Second motion?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action on resignation from Asset Management Committee, David De Cristofaro.
And if I may, it's De Cristo, not De Cristofaro.
Oh, yeah. So just to...
Just for the record.
De Cristofaro is on the agenda, but it's De Cristo on the actual email.
Okay.
Thank you. So I guess we're just making a note that we received his resignation and we'll send him a thank you. Thank you. Discussion by council vote or other action on resolution to create a charter review commission, Mr. Oger?
Yep, so I'm hoping this is a pretty, pretty quick discussion since it appeared to be in unanimous support the last couple of meetings. But I did finalize working with the solicitor in terms of what a resolution would look like. The resolution before you would create a charter review commission. It would consist of five members. It's pretty boilerplate in that sense in that it would be one member from the council, four members from the public appointed by the council, and then they would hold meetings as necessary to accomplish the goals. The solicitor, citizen input regarding revisions to the charter by public forum, public hearing, other processes, review the reports prepared by prior charter review commissions, committees, et cetera, review the current charter, make the recommendations, and then they shall appoint a chairperson, vice chair and all that. I will just...
Mr. VP, I don't mean to interrupt. There's a typo that I, I'm calling on myself. And, and under subsection 3B, it's solicit, citizen, not solicitor.
Ah, solicit, so. And then the only thing is that we would need to put is, when we would feel that they would need to deliver recommendations and proposed amendments to the council, that piece was blank. I wasn't sure how many days. I figured, you know, probably like, you know, by, I mean, we've talked short timelines in the past, like 60 days. It seems like those always run long. So I didn't know if the council had any input in that regard. You know, I, I do know and I will say that I have had quite a few people already reach out. I've had two people already recommend to serve on the charter review commission. I had a lot of people reach out saying that they felt we missed an opportunity this time around. And so, you know, in December of '22, I did try to put forward a charter review commission. And I, I know I've stressed throughout this term that I think it's something we really need to look at. State laws have changed. We need to bring it up to code in that regard. We found multiple inconsistencies over the time as well in a lot of different areas. I know we were only focusing on the terms and town manager versus town administrator. But I think we have two years to, to really rip this open and really look at doing it right and, you know, prioritizing what is really important. You know, if our charter is in conflict with state law, that, that should be correct. We shouldn't, we should be doing this more frequently, every five years or every, every 10 years, you know. I know, or every few years we convene it. I know some communities have a standing charter review commission. Some committees, I think it's Cumberland or Lincoln, say every five years they're reconvening the charter review commission. We don't have that. So I think, and maybe, I maybe just, you know, saying the obvious, but I think this is really important that we do this. And I think, you know, we've talked about it enough. I think it's time that we actually move forward. And hopefully, you know, we can put aside any partisanship or any disagreements and actually look at what's the betterment of the town and move forward in a cohesive, collaborative direction to make some significant change, so.
So you're looking for approval of this for this evening? And then the way it's written, it's broadly enough defined that we could provide whoever is on the five-member team?
Yep.
Specific assignments, ask them for feedback and then move along, along those lines?
Yeah, I, you know, I would think that, you know, in terms of how we fill it, you know, we would go through the nomination process. People can apply. You know, if anybody knows anybody that is expressed interest, I would encourage them to apply. But, you know, I think we should take it a step further. You know, some of our committees, you know, they meet via live stream. And I know it's an extra burden to have live stream because we have to have CJ or somebody representative here to work the equipment. You know, I don't know if there's another way where maybe we can leverage like a Zoom or Teams or something. But I would think that this type of committee work should be livestreamed. You know, I think it's too important and it should be, you know, available for people to view and kind of follow along. I think it removes a lot of extra noise out there in terms of what actually went into deliberations and discussion. And so I just think, you know, because we're talking about the charter, we should be, you know, transparency came up. I think we should be over the top transparent on it. That's just my recommendation and we can talk about that at a later time. But I would think, you know, if we were to prove this this evening, I would think a 60-day report back is not out of the realm in terms of releasing initial, here's where we're going to focus on, and then maybe have a report back to the council by like June 1st or June 30th. That would give them six months. That would give the council six months to say, okay, well, maybe we want to tweak this, tweak that, and then you could be wrapped up with proposed charter amendments in April of the year after of the election year, so.
So I think we have a process already that we have an application, right? That people use for, for boards and commissions. We can use that, I would think, right? We don't have to reinvent the wheel. So anyone interested, I guess, would, where is that? Is that on our website?
Should be on the website. Yeah, it's on the website.
And it's fillable?
Yep.
Okay. So, you know, yeah, I, I would like to make a motion that we approve this this evening and then get going on it because we've been talking about it forever. And let's do it the right way.
Okay, we have a motion. Anyone like to second?
Yep.
To establish the date.
Oh, the date.
Yeah, so the date would be June 30th.
June 30th?
Yep, 6/30.
2025. Obviously the, also the typo correct, right? Those two amendments?
So June 30th, 30, 30, 35, yeah, 2035.
2025.
20, all right. Is for the termination of this commission, right, that charter review?
When their final report would be due.
Doesn't mean it terminated, but the report will be due.
So do we want to discuss when we want them to actually begin this process?
I would think that we should just, you know, we said earlier, government doesn't stop. I think we should, as soon as if this passes, we start, we start seeing, appointing people. And then, you know, that process keeps going, you know.
So we do it as quickly as like next meeting?
Yeah, we could do it the meeting or the meeting after, depending on if we have a quorum.
All right. I would say that too. I mean, there's not, there's a lot of work to do, so why wait?
Most towns, in my research, you could take up to a year just going through this process. So that's why I think June 30th makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Did I think, did I make a motion? Yes, I did.
Yep, and I'll second.
With the amendments, Madam Clerk.
With the amendments, yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So now open forum, agenda items only pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. Did anyone want to get up and speak during this time? Anyone like to get up during open forum? Okay, move on to executive session, closed session. Discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42-46-5A5. Any discussions or considerations related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public? One, considerations related to the acquisition of real property for public purposes. And two, consideration of the disposition of publicly held property. And I make a motion to go into executive?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.